And they retired from the business and a great, again, a great committee that meets quarterly, really, really gets into it, you know, it's inside baseball stuff. They really know what they're talking about and they make some excellent recommendations for our investments. And we've come a long way on that in the last several years. So we have a motion that's been seconded. Are there further questions?
So do we have, I see the other pension overage, are we over on FIC and Medicare because people left, or we over withheld, or?
No, actually, there are funds available in that account to transfer into the legal accounts.
Yeah, why are there funds available?
Yeah.
I think it's Mrs. Cheeseman's.
We just had lower than expected overtime, for example.
We didn't stiff the feds.
Absolutely not.
The bills can pay first.
What a good idea.
I know, I know that. I just don't want to have to bake a cake with a file in it for the finance director in the first selectman.
I think we all would probably go with that.
Would I go to chair? Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, nice. So now to, well, B is week 53, do you guys, I don't know if I brought this up before, but this is baffling.
Well, it's because of leap year.
We have three, yeah, but a leap year is one day.
Three pay periods.
We have fifty-three weeks of pay this year. Now, my first, the first thing on my mouth, Anna, was, well, what about next year? Is it only fifty-one weeks? Or last year was it fifty-one weeks?
Well, fifty-two.
No. See, every thirty years or so, we're adding one day every four years, and it adds up to eventually being an extra week.
Yep.
Did you know that, Victoria?
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Who's smarter than an eleventh grader here?
She takes quizzes.
Right, so, I guess I never really thought of that, but sure enough, it comes under my watch. And it was pointed out about forty-five weeks into the year that, oh my gosh, we have an extra week. And here it is. So, we are doing some moving of funds around. We're, we know that we can pay the bills. We won't be returning as much back to the reserve account as we would hope because we have to pay our valued employees. But there are fifty-three payroll weeks, so we are moving some money here, as indicated.
Move to ratify departmental transfers in the amount of $50,692 processed for fiscal year end June 30th, 2016, related to week 53 payroll and to forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second. I guess it gives us twenty-eight more years.
It's a twenty-eight, yeah.
It happens more frequently than, it's not every three years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
More frequently than that.
I don't know, it's seven times every four years.
Four, but it's not, there's a once in a while shifts, but, yeah.
Any other questions? Any other physics or, I don't know. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? I still don't believe this. So fifty-three week payroll,
this is another transfer of similar nature. What is, how is this different than the last transfer, Anna? Both were fifty-three week payroll issues.
The other ones were to ratify the transfers that were done within the departments.
Within departments.
These are to actually transfer funds from another department. So this one needs approval for that.
Because some budgets are right down to the end because we budgeted right down to the dollar. So they're a desperate need for weeks of pay.
Move to process transfers in the amount of $52,309 as presented in the attached list for fiscal year end June 30th, 2016, related to week 53 payroll and to forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second.
Second. Any further comments? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Three G on our agenda is the carryover remaining LOSE
balance. As you know, LOSE is money we receive from the state. It's local capital improvement money. And we are entitled and are allowed to move money from fiscal year to fiscal year, move it forward. It's not, it's not money that we have to go hurry up and spend, which is the way it should be done. So we include in the general fund operating budget annually, money in our LOSE. And we are, in this case, asking to move over $173,844.74.
Move to approve the carryover of the remaining balance of up to $173,844.74 and account 01-30-317-500-100 LOSE and corresponding revenue account 01-03-300-320 from the 2015-16 budget to the 2016-17 fiscal year and forward to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Second.
It's been, it's, thank you, it's been very, it's very easy to pass by some of these projects that get done. But to point out, East Line Community Center energy program was done. We included the gas line extension to the community center so we could start using natural gas. We purchased a generator for the town hall, a parking lot pavement at Bride Brook Park, which was desperately needed, and Veterans Fields and McCooks Park. So those were all completed with LOSE monies this past year. Any comments about the LOSE money? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? We have a sign call.
Okay. Town of East Line, notice a special town meeting. Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the Town of East Line to be held on June 15th, 2016, at 7:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time at the East Line Town Hall Upper Meeting Room for the following purposes. One, to approve an appropriation of the amount of $643,696.26 for the purpose of acquiring by way of lease or purchase various vehicles and equipment, more particularly described in the town's fiscal year 2016-17 equipment acquisition plan as evidenced by one or more agreements for the acquisition of said vehicles by lease or purchase or a combination thereof for the total price of $619,500 plus interest at the rate of 1.57% annum payable in annual installments of $128,739.22, $10,728.27 per month over a period of five years. The first selectman is authorized in the name and on behalf of the town to execute and deliver any documents that may be required in connection with said trans actions. And Roseanne's going to take number two.
Did she know that?
No, she doesn't know. I know, then Mark will do three, Dan four.
To move an appropriation to the Board of Education in the amount of $2,438.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-three, four-thirty, $438.97 for the purpose of acquiring by way of lease or purchase or a combination thereof. You need to do number two. That's what I abstained on.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Various new computer and smart board equipment for the high school, middle school, Niantic Center School, Lilly B. Haynes, Flanders School, coastal connections in the central office, more particularly described in the East Line Public Schools' proposed Year One Computer Replacement Plan 2016-17 for the new student information system, the total amount of $215,040 plus interest at the rate of 1.57% per annum payable and annual installments of $44,687.78 or $3,723.98 per month over a five-year period. Number three, to approve of special appropriations of $235,000 from the CNRE for various projects consistent with the capital improvement plan, which includes town projects roofs, $25,000 HVAC replacement townwide, $10,000, sidewalk repair townwide, $25,000, town projects various, $75,000 replacing cooling towers, ELCC, community center, $20,000, reevaluation, $80,000 for a total of $235,000.
Four, to receive communications from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance with respect to a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $900,000 for the Rehabilitation of Various Town Roads and Authorizing the Issuance of $900,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation Impending the Issuance Thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose." Five, to consider and act upon a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $900,000 for the Rehabilitation of Various Town Roads and Authorizing the Issuance of $900,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation Impending the Issuance Thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose." Six, to receive communications from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance with respect to the resolution entitled, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $720,000 for the Reconstruction of Town Roads in the Bush Hill Neighborhood and Authorizing the Issuance of $720,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriations Impending the Issuance Thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose." Seven, to consider and act upon a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $720,000 for the Reconstruction of Town Roads in the Bush Hill Neighborhood and Authorizing the Issuance of $720,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriations Impending the Issuance Thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose." Eight, to transact any other business proper to come before the meeting. Copies of the proposed bond resolutions are in file and open to the public inspection of the town at the office of the town clerk dated at East Line, Connecticut, this first day of June 2016. East Line Board of Selectmen.
Second. Hey, it's been seconded. Further comment? That's the side call. All in favor say aye? Yes, ma'am. Hold on.
If I may, under item number two.
Under item number two.
After 2016-17, and then you please.
I didn't hear you. Under two is...
She probably should come up.
And a new student information center.
Oh, that should have been crossed out, the student information center.
Couple of pages. Student information, that was last year's.
So we'll move, we'll amend your...
Okay, I'll agree to the amendment and strike that part.
Strike that. We struck it everywhere else on our thing. We didn't strike it there. And your second has been so amended as well.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll call a motion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All in fa, I'll oppose. Any opposed? Any abstained? Unfinished business, there is none. Communications, there is none. Information reports, ex officio.
A few things from Parks and Rec, but they all relate to Boardwalk opening at McCooks. So I'll, I'm sure you're going to talk about that under your report, so I'll leave it for you.
Oh, you can go ahead and do it.
Okay. All right. And I was just going to speak to, the only thing I'd speak to regarding that is, Sunday night, we had a vigil for the veteran, for Memorial Day, run by the Veterans Council. As always, it was fantastic. Mark spoke well. General Adabo, who lives in town, he's a general in the Air Force Reserve, spoke very eloquently about the sacrifices made by people for several wars and several centuries here. And the really nice thing was, I mean, the solemnness of the ceremony was great, but there's a lot of young people there, young children and that, that were very attentive to what was going on and to the parents that brought them there to help them understand the history of Memorial Day. Thank you, and glad to see them there.
Thank you. Mrs. Hardy?
I have several things, but I think I can summarize those at the next meeting, other than just to mention that the Commission on Aging, we still do not have a meal site server. And as I said before, I think that perhaps we need to get our TVCCA representative in to talk with us. Needs to be some kind of movement. There's growing concern about this and particularly relying upon volunteers and being able to keep the equipment and facility in the best condition that it should be.
Yeah, they're having trouble finding reps, apparently. Do you think that's their responsibility and ours, but, uh, a TVCC?
Well, we appoint the, our representatives to TVCCA. The board appoints those people.
We have boards, but the actual employee, the site manager?
Well, I think that, no, I think that we need to have our representative come in and tell us what the problem is and what we need to do in order to be proactive. I mean, this has been, really, a year.
Yeah.
Probably more than a year.
They had someone in for a short period of time, but, yeah, no consistency at all.
And we are, we are contributing to TVCCA and with funds.
They're here.
And we should be getting a benefit for that.
Well, well, well said. Work on that.
I don't have anything besides for the fact, if you guys noticed, the Lulu Building off the highway was very graffitied about a month ago. I talked to the zoning, I talked to the zoning official, he was able to contact owner and they were able to repaint it because it was looking pretty bad. That's all I have.
Mr. Cunningham?
Well, I would just like to point out something that was brought up earlier in delegations. We do have two homes in the historic house museums brochure. And I think that's a really great thing for this, this town. And I would also point out that on June 6th, the Smith-Harris Barn, the Monville High Jazz Band is going to be playing there. I think that would be a really nice event for citizens to attend.
Do you know what time that starts?
I don't know what time. I'm not sure. But it's Monday, June 6th, and it's at the Smith-Harris Barn. And, you know, I think we really have to appreciate what we have in this town with respect to historic properties. And the committees that are involved with them are really dedicated. And we're very fortunate for that. And it really adds another aspect to East Line and what we have here.
This brochure is very professional looking.
Beautiful. There it is. There you go.
Well done. Mrs. Cheeseman?
Just briefly following up on that, that was an excellent collaborative effort spearheaded by Southeastern Connecticut Coalition to get all of the local historic homes to contribute. So seventeen of them together were able to produce this excellent brochure. I attended a meeting today of the cultural coalition, the Eastern Connecticut Chamber, sector. Just as a point of interest, there is now going to be a regional calendar core ECT. So all cultural museums, libraries are going to be able to post their events on one calendar. It's also going to be joined by the day newspaper. So I would encourage any organization in town, including Niantic Main Street, the public library, to look into this because it'll be a great way. You can filter it by family fun, historic events, is it a free event, the calendar day you're involved. And I think it's going to be a wonderful asset for the region and a good way to promote all our local activities. And apart from that, I have no other report.
Nothing. Children's museum, plug in?
Well, you know, we're hopping.
How about the library?
The library, the, nothing since my, my last report.
You are many hats.
Indeed.
Victoria, thank you for running the board over there. Man, you're awesome. When you're here, things go much smoother than what I've been charged.
Well, it's usually me messing up the camera.
So we appreciate you being here. It's volunteer community service at its best. I really do appreciate you being here. You're junior, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so good. Doesn't mean you'll be back next year, but maybe you'll finally replace.
She will be because she's going to be in my class.
Oh, Victoria's returning. We've made an announcement. Hey, the baseball team won their second game tonight. This is Wednesday. In the state, they have to win five games in a row to be state champs.
Yep.
They've won two. Third game will be, I heard, at home. I heard Saturday. Now Saturday's also the senior prom, so hopefully it's going to be during the middle of the day. That's the update. That's the sports update. The Boardwalk opening was fantastic. It was Saturday. Well done by the East Line Public Trust, put on a great show. It was nice to see Congressman Courtney there, State Senator Farmica, many others. Memorial Day festivity, because we had a canceled Memorial Day parade, first time in a long time. But the vigil is just a first-class event, supported by many, many residents. It's heartwarming to see so many people come out to spend an hour on the town green, remembering those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom. The Odd Couple, the female version is being, is a production being put on by the Senior Center, East Line Players. And it's going to be Friday night and Saturday afternoon. They're going to do two performances at the community center. Look them up online, look them up at, they have a Facebook page. Senior Center would be able to give you tickets and tell you times and dates as well. But it's our seniors in town doing that. The Babe Ruth Group, Babe Ruth Baseball is in desperate need of support. They're, they're putting on a steak dinner. Joe, do you know anything about that? Is it at the field?
No, it's at Flinders Fish at 5:00.
Flinders Fish, I got 4:30, but 5:00, 4:30 at Flinders Fish?
It's 25.
It's a steak dinner. They have good steak over there, as well as the fish and the lobster. So, good. And, you know, if you, if you come out and spend $25 on a good meal, bring your family, and some of that money goes to Babe Ruth, and that's, that's a good thing.
What was the date on that?
That's this Saturday afternoon.
Sorry.
Well.
I figured the kids off the prom.
The Bright Music Festival goes on Sunday at McCooks. Five bands, it's, it's, they're raising money and awareness for suicide prevention and awareness, put on by the Brian Dagel Foundation and another group. And it's just a nice summer festival. I encourage people to go up there, drop some money in the donation bin. But check out, some five bands are donating their time under the tent. I was up there last year, and great bands and just a great scene and people just doing good, good work in our community and highlighting, you know, mental, I don't see mental illness, but yeah, mental illness and issues surrounding our youth. So highlighting that. The historical properties was brought up two or three times tonight. That's at 2:00 on Sunday. I put a blog out on speeding in our community. It's on Facebook. It's also on the town website. And check it out. It's a, it's a problem that is happening all around town. I get phone calls all the time on, for various roads in town. If we could all do our part and slow it down a little bit, if you're, if you're driving in your neighborhood or someone else's neighborhood, we'd like to keep the speeds down a little bit. There's a major issue with people crossing the crosswalks downtown and, and people not stopping, people not stopping for school buses. It's amazing. We live in a great small town with great people, but this, this, this problem plagues us. And it's not just locals. I don't want to pin it just locals. You know, we have a lot of outsiders driving through our town, but if we set the prevailing speed, they'll be behind us and be forced to slow down. There will be a video, there is a video, I think, on the town website of my TV show with Dave Pottemore. This particular issue is about the beaches. And, you know, we have great beaches, we have great facilities in town. If it's going to be a good beach day, get there early, because we've already sold 2,000 beach passes, eight new beach passes for the year. Of course, we don't have that many spots in town. So if you're planning on coming down to our beaches and it's going to be one of those days on a weekend and, and you know people will be flocking to the beach, get down there early. I do recommend that. Lastly, two things. First of all, Dave Miko is retiring after 39 years. Is that true? Thirty-nine years?
Mm-hmm.
You started the same year. You, you have 39 years, don't you?
Forty-nine.
You have 49 years?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy has 49 years teaching in our town. You're going at 60 and then retiring?
I'm thinking maybe 75.
Seventy-five. That would be outstanding. So...
You'll be here when we do Bush Hill Road again.
Dr. Miko is retiring. He's, he's done great service in our town. And lastly, as a principal at Lilly B. He's a great man and a great mentor to many. And he is retiring after many years. There is a thing going on, isn't there, tomorrow night?
Tomorrow from 5:00 to 8:00 at McCooks.
Five to eight at McCooks is a retirement. Well, people are welcome to go up there, pat him on the back and, you know, encourage him and thank him for the service to our community, to our youth, to our future. Lastly, on Monday night, I am sponsoring a forum on the opioid addiction issues in our region and in our town. We have great speakers. We just did a preliminary meeting tonight on what we're going to be talking about and who's going to be presenting. It will be a fantastic presentation of what's going on out there. Real numbers, real people that are affected, real students, real graduates of our school as well. This will be at the East Line High School on Monday night, June 6th, at 7:00 PM. I encourage you all to come. We can't bury our head in the sand. We need to face facts that I heard 40,000 people in America are dying each year from opioid addiction, whether it's prescribed pills that come from CVS and Rite Aid or, or, you know, something bought on the street. It doesn't matter. It's the same drug and affects you the same way. Transmitter's in your head. So we need to get that clear, that this is a problem that's out there. And we need to be well aware of the problem. And it might not be you today, it might be someone someday that you could help. That's it. Public comment?
Before we go to public comment.
Oh, sorry.
Water and Sewer Commission, of which you're the chair by charter. I assume that packets are mailed to them in advance.
Yeah, packets are mailed in advance. Also, drafts aren't always ready days and days and days before a meeting. Most often times, it's, you know, the day of, putting drafts together. And to my knowledge, drafts, working drafts, not finished drafts, are not public documents.
I concur.
That was what I received from FOI. So until they're made public, any, any working document is not necessarily public information. Thanks for reminding me to clarify that.
Okay. I assume that their packets are received similar to our packets.
Yes.
Three or four days prior to the meeting.
Mailed prior, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And like you got a packet tonight, you didn't get the final version of a few things. We gave you a preliminary. But that contract, for instance, changed twice since we mailed the packet on Friday. So things change all the time. Thanks for clarifying that. I did see a handout for public delegation. Jen?
Jennifer Murray, 7 Tabernacle Avenue. I missed when Philip Russell was here with the presentation that he gave you, but I've been able to look it over. I think it looks fantastic. It would be wonderful if you would consider inviting him back on your actual agenda and giving him a little bit more time to go over that with you personally, as well as possibly anyone else in the community who comes to you with something so well put together, especially with 30 years of experience in town in public school finance. He sounds like he can really inform us a lot, especially his thoughts about putting forth an application for each individual elementary school, since we do have three different plans floating out there now. If you filed each school individually, then when you do go to referendum, you can pick what's going to go to referendum. But if all three have already been filed with the state, you're guaranteed your reimbursement rates. So that is on his action item page on the last page of that packet he gave you. And I will apologize, I might have to reference my phone for part of these notes. But I'm actually here tonight to ask the Board of Selectmen, either anyone on this board individually, or for the board as a whole, to instruct the town attorney to investigate the lack of minutes and agenda of the committee that did change the school's plan. Now, there's been many denials that this committee existed. Jeff Newton said that he met with people informally, that he made these changes himself based on discussions. But I recently discovered that if you reference the Niantic Center School website and go to their PTA section, you can read the minutes of their PTA meetings. And under the principal's report, our principal, Melissa DiLoreto, mentions, and these are the minutes of, I'm sorry, the February 10th, 2016 meeting. Principal's report, she discusses the budget reductions that happened this year. Building project now under new committee, Noah's Ark. This is the committee that everybody has been asking for more information on. So it's referenced as a committee on a website in minutes. And then, if you then go to the Board of Education website, to the February 22nd, 2016 minutes, Jeff Newton describes meeting on more than one occasion with what he calls an informal group comprised of two members of the Board of Education, two members of the Board of Selectmen, two members of the Board of Finance, two members of the Vision Committee, and the three elementary school principals. So I would assume that we can all put two and two together and go, this committee, that a member of the committee, Melissa DiLoreto, is calling Noah's Ark, is being called Noah's Ark because of the two members of each committee.
She called it Noah's Ark?
Yes. It's on the minutes in the PTA.
Interesting.
PTA minutes. And then, again, it's referenced. So if there's a specific group of meeting that takes multiple public officials, regardless of whether you have a quorum from any particular board, but if you have... any particular board, but if you have, um, two public officials from each board, plus, people who were put on a committee on the directive of the Board of Education, if you have them all meeting, and they're meeting regularly, and they're not keeping minutes, and they're changing a plan from a vetted plan to remodel two of our elementary schools, I think that there's a legal issue here, there's certainly an ethical issue, that these minutes are not available, that there's no membership, no agendas, and no minutes, and clearly, it's described as a committee in public records right now. So, again, I do ask if anyone on this board is willing to look into this and investigate this, to figure out why meetings like this are happening without minutes being kept, maybe make a change to make sure that minutes are kept, and ask the town attorney whether there was any lines crossed that were illegal or inappropriate, because this resulted in a large change, where the previous two, the previous school plan was vetted with full drawings, um, traffic studies, lunch waves were even discussed, there was a plan for when each section of students would go to lunch, to make sure that the flow would work with each of these two schools. This new plan with the Lily B. Haynes, none of these things have been done, no one knows when the kids are gonna go to lunch, how many lunch waves they're gonna require, no traffic studies are done, so it's definitely not a, a fully vetted plan, and considering that it was changed with no minutes being held on, at any of these meetings, and now we know that this was described as a committee by one of its members, I think that there needs to be an investigation into this committee, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Selectmen comments? I'll tell you that Mrs. DiLoreto must have misspoke, it was not a committee, they were charged with no authority, they made no decisions, um, I went to several of the meetings, they were just giving input to be forwarded to the Design Committee, who did make a decision to recommend to the Board of Education, uh, that ends that. There's not three plans floating around, there's one plan, uh, that the Board of Ed is working on, this commission has no authority to change any plans, it's not what we do. If a plan is forwarded to us sometime in September, we'll either be able to vote to move it forward to the Board of Finance, which will then, if they vote, move it to a Board of, uh, to, to, uh, referendum, or not, we don't get yet, we don't get to move that plan an inch, we can't change that plan one brick. We get a plan that's voted on by the Board of Education, so all the energy that's being focused on, the Board of Selectmen, think before you act, we were told tonight, there's nothing to act on, there is absolutely no plan that's been forwarded to us, there's been, uh, an informational session to tell us where they are so far, and what their thinking is, we gave them pretty honest feedback, I think some detail was given about where, where we're thinking, but we have no with...